Good evening. I'm going to start the Marlborough School Committee meeting. Please stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. First, I'd like to read off the public participation slide tonight, September 8, 2020. The school committee is holding this meeting virtually with members attending in person and/or remotely. No public attendance will be permitted. Public participation is not a question and answer session, but a time for your comments to be heard by the committee. To listen to the meeting at the above date and time, you may do so by tuning into WMCT TV, Comcast Channel 8, or Verizon Channel 34. For the public comment portion of this meeting, members of the public may provide comment by dialing 774-243-0611 and dialing the conference ID of 422-250-057. Again, that phone number, which you can dial right now and you can get into the meeting, we will put you in the lobby for waiting, is 774-243-0611 and the conference ID is After public participation has ended, please do not call the number listed. Additionally, if anyone wants to submit comments in advance of the meeting, they can do so by emailing me at superintendent@mps-edu.org. I'm just going to read the phone number off one more time. If anybody wants to join the meeting, you can. We will have you in the lobby, and when we do the public participation, we'll bring you into the meeting so you can have your comment. It's 774-243-0611 and the conference ID is 422-250-057. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. And we have no presentations this morning, this evening, so it looks like you're up.
Thank you. Again, I just wanted to give the school committee an update on the weekly dashboard, and I shared the graphic with them as well as a link to be able to access the dashboard on the mass.gov site. It just shows the community-level data map that has become popular for what the governor has given schools for decision-making. There was no change from week to week, and the only thing that went down was the percent positive cases was below 2% on that last map, which is a good sign. My second item is the MHS hybrid schedule. After serious deliberation and a review of the student schedules, we've decided to move MHS to a hybrid format with A and B cohorts instead of focusing on trying to have all 10th graders come in every day as a priority grouping. After considering the schedule from the student perspective, the administration has determined that a hybrid schedule that follows the A and B cohort would provide a better educational model this fall. Mr. Riley will be communicating this change to parents and students, and he actually has already begun doing so. And Mr. Riley will be at the school committee meeting should there be any outstanding questions. If you would like, I can read the next one. And Mr. Riley and Mr. Wazinski are here at the meeting tonight to answer questions, if that's okay with you.
Sure, good.
Great.
Thank you.
The third item is athletics. The administration is proposing the following as a schedule for athletics for this year. Fall Season 1 is September 18 through November 20, with a caveat that I believe that the administration and Mr. Riley and Mr. Wazinski are also on board if we wanted to start the practices on September 21. The winter season will be November 30 through February 21, and Fall Season 2 would be February 22 through April 25. Spring season would be April 26 through July 3. In this recommendation, we're asking for the following sports from the fall season to be pushed into the fall 2 season: football, volleyball, cheerleading, and unified basketball. Our fall sports would be soccer, field hockey, golf, and cross-country. There will be significant rule changes to both soccer and field hockey for this fall, and we want to be very transparent that these two sports will not look like they have in the past. In Fall Season 2, we will offer, again, cheerleading, football, volleyball, and unified basketball. The MidWatch League is also recommended to league principals not to run middle school sports this fall. I do support this recommendation. And with the number of schools that still have middle school sports, we actually probably wouldn't be able to pull off a season anyway. We have no one to play against. So I support that recommendation on both sides of that. I want to share my thoughts with the committee. This school year will bring its share of complications and issues to our doorstep each school day. Organized team sports have a unique opportunity this year, and my hope is that we can all get behind a simple message. This is about participation. This is about developing friendships with your teammates. It's not about winning and losing. My expectations for sports is that we focus on participation and friendship, healthy routines for our students, and that we support our programs with this intent. Again, Mr. Wazinski will be at the meeting to answer any additional questions about this proposal. I don't know if you wanted me to take a pause at this time for questions or continue my report.
What's the pleasure? Do people have questions? Yeah. Do you want to jump in there? Okay. All right. So we'll do that. Mrs. Hennessy?
I hadn't even raised my hand yet. So I guess first off, sticking in order, the hybrid schedule. I have to say that I really do appreciate and support this change being brought forward. I have to say that I was very fortunate because I had the opportunity to listen in on the conversations with Principal Riley for the meeting with the juniors as well as the meeting with the sophomores, just to get an understanding of kind of what was going on. And I really have to say thank you very much to Mr. Riley. The presentations were really, really wonderful, and I only got to hear two of them out of the four. But I heard from others in the community and around the table here, a lot of appreciation for how well you handled those meetings and being able to think on your feet and answer questions that were coming to you that evening, and the length of time that you took to answer every single question. So I really wanted to thank you very much in front of everyone because you did a great job. And with that, I guess I know that you've been really clear, Mr. Riley, on your conversations when you did your presentations to those groups that called in. But I definitely think it would be helpful if you could give a little bit of clarity around the why, because I think the synchronous learning that you spoke about during those phone call Zoom meetings or team meetings was really helpful to understand. And I think some parents that may not have obviously had the opportunity to be on those calls might appreciate that information from you.
Absolutely. I'm happy to present. Thank you. Thank you for the compliments. It's been a team effort, and I just can't, I can't extend enough of my appreciation to the committee on the support. It's eight days before the school year is starting, and this year has presented its, a series of problems that we need to solve to give our students in Marlborough the very best experience that they deserve. So I appreciate the support as we're continuously working through this. With respect to the change, so we went ahead and we scheduled the priority groupings for both 10th and 11th grade at Marlborough High School. With having those two groups on campus, our student enrollment was just shy of 800 students per day. And so in order to meet those needs, we had to spread the staff pretty thin to ensure that we had face-to-face instruction happening for that large of a group. When we revisited this last week and we ran a sample model of what would happen if we ran those two groups as hybrid, meaning that they would come in for week on and week off, we were able to alleviate a lot of the staff, which then ultimately impacted our instructional model for what was happening when students were during their hybrid at-home week. And so without making it too complicated, essentially, before the change, we were looking at our staff being spread extremely thin, and students would have experienced mainly office hours, similar to what we had going in the spring because of the finite amount of staff that we have at Marlborough High School. When we made the shift and we looked at the impact on staffing, we were able to start dedicating staff to not just face-to-face instruction, but also to synchronized learning, which would reflect almost in a sense of what we're doing now. Where I'm presenting to you as a group, we're live, we're talking live. And so this could be an example of something that's synchronized. It's during a set window of time. And therefore, we're going to be able to now provide with this shift that experience to our students in more course areas. We're looking at all of the core areas in 9th and 10th grade, and at the very least, math and ELA for 11th and 12th graders. So they'll be able to log in on a daily basis when they're at home, be live with their instructor, so that their instructor is guiding them through the assignments and the learning. Really, it doesn't stop. So in the departments where we were able to gain back the staff by re-looking at the distribution of students and reducing those priority groups to hybrid, we were able to achieve that across the board for 9th and 10th graders, and then also in math and ELA for 11th and 12th graders. And we're still finalizing those scheduling opportunities. So there may be more synchronized learning that can take place within the schedule as we button everything down this week.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the insight. I believe I kind of understand it, and I hope everybody else does. But should people have questions? What do you suggest is the best opportunity so that, you know, everyone's not flooded with information, but yet people are not walking into this still wondering what's going on? How would you like to have people ask questions appropriately?
Absolutely. I mean, so first, we appreciate when parents reach out to us directly. I always prefer that method because it gives that personalized approach to working through something with them, helping them better understand something. So reaching out to us directly, we can talk over the phone. You can send me an email. Secondly, if you want to view the meetings that we had put up there, they are all posted on the website. And you can also take a look at those. And I try to walk parents through with the sample schedules what the changes would look like with this new, with this new allocation of synchronized learning in place.
Okay. And last question. Some folks that may have a little bit more, I guess, not run-of-the-mill courses, some that may have AP courses, or I can't even come up with something. But like, how do you suggest, like, some of those are going to be handled this year, knowing our limitations?
Absolutely. Great question. So what we have done is we've expanded beyond what we can offer within our own staff at Marlborough High School. And Mr. Diaz has actually worked with us to support us, to expand our VHS, which stands for virtual high school offerings. And so especially for students that are taking upper-level advanced placement, or we call them AP classes, we're offering that to many more students this year, more than ever before. And so we're looking at approximately 50 students who are 100% remote and/or need additional courses within their schedule that they might not be able to fit, now that we've gone from seven courses to six courses. So we're trying to work with families on an individual basis to make sure that their students get everything that they want out of their schedule. And Mr. Diaz opened that option up to us a couple weeks ago so that we could better meet the needs of those families, so.
Great. Thank you. I'll stop with my questions because I think Mrs. Matthews may hit. No? Oh, no?
No. I actually have one question. Mr. Riley, can you just explain to us, like, how are, like, science labs going to work?
That's a great question. No. Well, so what we have talked about so far, and I'm going to try to speak on behalf of the staff in our science department here, but what we have essentially decided upon is that whenever possible, they're going to be able to do, like, demonstrations for the students. They'll use computer-generated demonstrations or virtual labs, if you will. They'll do the demonstrations for students. Unfortunately, science is going to take a significant step back this year in the hands-on approach that students will be getting out of it, and there'll be a lot more observation that's taking place in the classrooms.
Okay. And I just throw out there, I was talking to somebody whose daughter's a science major in college, and they're, they set up kind of labs outside, and they're doing, they're doing some science labs actually outside. And I was just thinking, oh, that seems like a great idea. I could see maybe some, probably not chemistry, but physics. I mean, you know, you could do some things outside without causing too much havoc, but I appreciate it.
Yes, no lugging chemicals through the building. But yeah, no, absolutely. I think that's a wonderful idea, and that's a great example of sort of the collaboration that just needs to happen during these times. We need to be learning from others. Others are learning from us. It's really a growing day-by-day process as we get ready for a hybrid start. So thank you for sharing that idea. I know there's a lot of great ideas out there, and our science department is working to generate those ideas and find them. So again, we're just going to keep working to make sure that it's the very best experience that our kids deserve, regardless of the constraints that we're working under.
Great. Thank you. Any other ques-- oh, Mrs. Hennessy?
Sorry. One more for clarity's sake. For electives such as in the music and arts, those are opportunities that are going to still be provided, yet be provided at home, right? When the, when the children are at home working, they'll have opportunities along those lines to have some of those electives there, correct?
Yes, absolutely. All students will have access to electives. Electives across all departments have been designated as 100% remote. So there are, what I mean by that is there's electives in all departments that have a 100% remote designation. Mainly half-year electives, although we do have a couple of fine arts advanced placement courses that will be run in 100% remote, and our teachers will be delivering them. But yes, absolutely, all students will have access to electives.
Great. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Riley? Seeing none. I guess there's some for Mr. Wazinski. Mrs. Matthews? No? Okay. Do you have any questions for Mr. Wazinski?
I guess the only clarity I would love, if Mr. Wazinski could clear up, though, the MIAA, Mr. Wazinski, has pretty much handed down guidelines about the modifications around some of the sports, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So although, as the superintendent was indicating, the sports may look a little bit different, or very different, such as soccer or field hockey.
Right.
Those modifications are not something that we did here around this table, or you or Mr. Riley came up with. This is something that has been designated by the MIAA as guidelines for the state to follow, correct?
Yeah. Excuse me. Yes. The EEA guidelines came down, and then the MIAA sport committees within those guidelines had to come up with protocol on how the game will look to fit within the guidelines that the EEA put forward. And again, those, those were not from Mr. Riley or myself or our league. That's the constraints we need to play under, and that's what we'll do.
Okay. Thank you. Also, just to understand, when the sports schedules are trying to get put together, do I understand correctly that it's going to be done more in potting? Is it done by locality? Is it done by competitive nature, size of school? Any insight on that?
Yeah. Right now, we are finalizing. It is going to be a geographical potting situation to make things, to make things a little bit--
Thank you, Cora.
Get out of here. Sorry about that. So again, to fall under the constraints of keeping things, keeping everything localized, minimize bus trips. We're keeping it within our communities very locally.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that for another time, people out there that are hearing about athletics have an opportunity to make sure that they're hearing it directly from you. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Could I just add one thing that I know that we're going to look at the 21st as our start date. The reason that the 18th was put forward, just because with, with all of the new protocols and guidelines, we need to have team meetings prior to that date on the 21st. And that was one of the reasons the MI put that date forward. We needed to have 14 practice days or get-together days prior to the first contest, and the first contest was slated for October 5. So that was the only reason that date was put forward by us.
Mrs. Matthews?
Mr. Wazinski, I appreciate that, and I under, I know you weren't part of our conversations that we had the last time regarding the sports, but I think the MIAA was very clear, and Mrs. Hennessy can speak to this as well, is that the intent of the date was to make sure kids were in school first before athletics started. So for most districts that were starting by the 16th, the 18th made sense. In our case, since we're not starting till the 21st, I think we're being generous in allowing the kids to get together for sports on the 21st. We need to figure out school first. And, and I think, you know, my, in my opinion, the 21st might be even a little too soon to start doing this. So I would hope that there's no rush to do it, and that since most of the sports are not going to look like what they have in the past, that we make sure that, you know, the kids are doing the academics prior to worrying about how many practices they're going to have before competitions.
Absolutely. I just wanted to clarify what we were looking at with that date.
Okay. Thank you.
Would there be any reason, Jeff, this is, this is Mike, would there be any reason, Jeff, where some of our coaches couldn't hold a virtual team meeting on the 18th or 19th while not having them physically present but could go over some of the rule modifications and start to talk to the athletes? I know that a great number of our coaches are also staff members.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's something that we'll look into. And it was more myself having a meeting with each individual team. Because like I said, the COVID protocols and guidelines that we put forward through, through our district and league are pretty extensive. So that's, we'll look into doing that. But the 21st will work fine.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Thank you. So Jeff, I totally agree with the idea that it would be great to have the meetings Zoom-wise or team meetings or something like that, if possible, prior to the 21st. Because as you said, getting out the information about the modifications is going to be really kind of critical, not only coming from you, but also introductions to the coaches. And the other question that, you know, not for an answer necessarily tonight, but I think around the table, we've had some conversations to make sure that we are trying to make a success of the academics, was trying to understand a little bit about practices and cohorts, and how you might be able to approach some of the numbers that need to be kept, you know, on the lower end, and if there's some opportunity of creating cohorts that would align with the A and the B that are being set up within the academic access. You know, again, it's not for us to tell you how, but it was something that kind of came up on trying to make sure that we're supporting for academic success and not potentially crossing lines immediately. So just kind of throwing that out there is thought.
Yeah. And health.
And health. Yes, of course. That too. That's a big thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, oh, Mr. Caruso?
Yeah, Jeff, I'm just curious, these new look sports that we're going to have, the way they're going to do them now, is that going to affect our ability to offer all of our student athletes the same opportunity to participate they would have normally had? Or is it going to be something different, and we're going to have the ability to--
I'm sorry. I didn't catch the whole question.
Sorry. I'm going to do this just because I can't hear myself a little bit.
Dan, bring your microphone closer to you. There you go.
Let me try this again. Oh, there you go. I can hear myself. Is this, the new look sports, whatever way they're planning on doing that, the only thing I've heard about is the soccer, myself, is that going to affect our ability to offer all of our student athletes the equal opportunity to participate? Or is that going to cause a problem in that respect? Because I know they're talking about some odd way of doing things that--
You know what? I, I'm not sure of the answer to that question right now. I think it's kind of a wait-and-see.
Okay. But it's just something I think I want to make sure that's on, somewhere up in the, in the list of things we have. I know the shortlist that you have to worry about, that's one of them I want to put on the bottom of, just because that's important as well.
Kind of along those lines, Mr. Superintendent, in your description of your hopes for how things are going to go in the world of athletics, you had commented about how you're interested in making it about participation, and that kind of drove my questioning around cuts. I mean, is the purpose of this exercise to get kids together and socially distanced, of course, and getting some, you know, physical activity going? I mean, are we going to still be holding tryouts and cuts in the same way, I guess is my question?
I haven't spoken to Mr. Wazinski or Mr. Riley about anything about cuts, so I would reserve my comments until I have a time to talk to them. But I think for me, having some sports available is a good first start, and I would try to push the participation into some of the sports like cross-country, where you can have a much larger team. And we could always, you know, subsidize that with additional coaches if we had to.
Ah, great. And golf, right? Cross-country and golf are open game.
Golf might be a little bit harder for some folks that never played before, cross-country. You just get some shoes and you can be on a team. So I would just say, I'm not very good at golf. I'd probably go for the other, but I'd say--
Nobody's really that good at golf. So lots of people play it, and most of them aren't very good.
I think when we look at that participation, the idea behind that, I think what I'm looking for is an opportunity for extracurriculars outside the normal school day that we can do in a safe way. And, you know, there might, there absolutely could be an upper limit to how many kids we can have on a certain team with having it still be able to be safe and be able to have that many kids. I guess one of the reasons you probably see football being pushed to fall season 2, you have 50 to 70 kids on a football team. It's hard to keep the social, the physical distancing during those periods of time.
Yeah.
So I'll get back to you on the issue of tryouts and cuts. I just haven't had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Wazinski and Mr. Riley about that.
Yeah. And I just, I would love to be able to see how we could offer activities, even if it's not on a sports team. But, you know, can we have regular time scheduled for kids to play tennis? You know, that can be done safely. You know, just some of the other activities that we might have on campus that we can, not to put more work on anybody's plates, but I'm just trying to think, think it through.
The only comment I did want to say that, you know, I have to say I feel bad for Mr. Wazinski, and frankly, the modifications that have been put forth for soccer and for field hockey, and I would say honestly, for field hockey specifically, they've limited the number of players on the field at one time. It's only seven, where they normally would have 11. And one of the seven must be the goalie, right? So essentially, you're talking about only a rotation of six field hockey players. So that in itself is very tough. So I do not envy the coach, nor do I envy Mr. Wazinski on trying to figure out how to move that, work with that modification. That said, I am aware that there was a letter that was circulated by a lot of coaches and athletic directors in the state that had a lot of concerns around the 7v7 modification, and they have reached out to the MIAA to ask for that modification to be reconsidered. Where that stands right now, I have no idea. But I do know that that did come out, and one of the reasons, which was a reason that I voiced during the sports medicine meeting when we discussed that modification, was a concern around participation as well as fitness. Because if you consider the fitness levels that some of our students may or may not have had over the summer, it could actually be really tough. Because for field hockey, not only do they have to wear mouthguards and masks, but are, and then they have to have goggles because the goggle rule was not removed from Massachusetts. So they're dealing with a lot of issues, and that could cause a lot of concern. So I think you all need to be aware of that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Wazinski? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, you still have one more.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Wazinski, for being here tonight. And thank you, Mr. Rosensky, for being here tonight. My fourth item is the supervisor of remote learning. Tonight, I'm asking approval from the committee to hire a temporary position for this school year to help us create a point of contact and support our remote team. I've included a description of the job and responsibilities for you to review. After DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education mandated that we provide a remote option for families, we have allocated significant resources and faculty as program to serve students. I want to support them in this new model of education and provide effective leadership and communication through a point of contact for our remote faculty and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to the superintendent? Seeing none? Okay, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This is tonight's update from Finance and Operations. Food Services. On August 31st, the USDA announced the extension of several meal distribution flexibilities through December 31st, 2020. These flexibilities allow school districts to continue serving free meals to children and teenagers in the same manner Marlboro utilized in the spring and the summer to serve our community. This is something we had joined the state in advocating for. Operationally, we will now have the flexibility needed to serve meals to students at school as well as students learning remotely in a quick, safe, and non-disruptive manner. Transportation. Yet another reminder, if a student is not registered to ride the bus, we will not be able to transport the student in a couple of weeks. If you wish to register your student or have a question about transportation, please email transportation@mps-edu.org. Again, we can only fit 25 children, students per bus, and seats will be assigned. And in order to have an assigned seat, you need to register. So please do so if you haven't done so already. Kindergarten routing has been completed and AM PM kindergarten assignments are being communicated to families via their schools. Work on routes for grades one through 12 is ongoing and will be posted publicly as soon as they are completed. We are anticipating early next week at the latest. Hopefully, we can get one, grades one through five posted before this week's over. We're also updating our website to have a new transportation FAQ as well as transportation protocols for this fall, and that is going to be posted before this week is over on our website as well. Facilities. The facilities department continued to work with our H5 consultants on reviewing our systems and implementing COVID-19 related recommendations. The buildings are safe for staff occupancy and additional work is ongoing before students return. Completed reports are shared on our website and will be updated periodically to reflect work that has been done. So as of last week, all of the schools have a report that's been posted online. And again, as we continue the ongoing work, reports will be updated to reflect the work that has been done, and those updated reports will be posted online as well. That's all I have tonight.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. I wanted to thank you for the transportation update and to put it out there for the community that it's not as simple as it's always been with the bus routes. And as you said, putting out just the kindergarten piece, then the K through, or the one through five, and then the remainder. In the past, you would set a route and it was basically, you know, it was the same thing no matter what grade, because it was the neighborhood. We're counting seats, we're counting people. So we, school's still two weeks away from tomorrow, and we normally don't have bus routes until, sometimes we've gotten wuddled the night before, so patience. We'll get your kids to school, we promise.
As long as they're registered.
That's right. As long as they've asked for a seat on the bus, they will get to school. So, but thank you for that.
Thank you for that. And there is still time to register. There is still space on the buses, so if you wish to ride, you can still do so. Thank you.
Mr. Gary.
I do have a question with the, with regards to transportation. We've been talking about, you know, they got to register. Clearly, there are people that haven't registered yet, otherwise we wouldn't be doing everything over and over. What, what kind of a, how many families do you think have not registered yet roughly? Do you have an idea, is it like 25% of people haven't registered yet, or 10, or what, 50? What is, what are we looking at?
That's, that's a great question. Thank you for that. We're actually fairly confident that we have reached a lot of families that are interested. Our concern is that in previous years, if you found one of our bus stops, you were able to get on the bus. This year, we're physically limited to 25 kids per bus.
Right.
And we don't want to be in a situation in which a child arrives to the bus stop and there is no room on that bus. So even if it's, if there's one or two families out there who have not yet registered, we want to make sure that we're reaching them. But we're fairly confident that we're, you know, 80% of our, of our students who are eligible to ride and who want to ride, we, we've captured them. And we're actually accounting for the folks who haven't. We've taken steps to reach out to the folks who haven't to make sure that they, you know, that they communicate back to us whether or not they want to ride. But our fear is come September 21st and we're going around on the bus, and if a bus is full and there's another child there on the bus stop. And obviously, we're going to take every step necessary to keep that child safe, and we're making plans for that. But we, we cannot accommodate more than 25 students on the bus, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Ryan.
I think it's important to note that, I think it's great that the, so far, I know the middle school teachers have reached out and like, one of the questions is, have you, have you registered to take the bus if your child's planning to take the bus? So I think that's one way of capturing the number, you know, have your, has your student registered? And hopefully, they're doing that at the elementary and the high school as well.
Yes, they are.
And another point is, I think families do have the opportunity to change their mind on whether or not they're, they're staying remote or coming to the hybrid model. If you are currently scheduled to be remote and you change your mind and want your student to come, you have to register for the bus.
And we're probably very soon going to have to cut that off. We're, we're too close to the start of school. We're going to have to tell families that your decision is now final. We have you in our system. We need to make sure we can craft class lists for everybody and communicate out to families. We don't want families, you know, it's, it's bound to happen if we continue with this process that someone's going to get a call from a teacher and then we're going to have to collapse classrooms for another remote classroom, we're going to have to change teachers. We don't want to have to do that to families. So at some point, we need to, we, probably this week, we're going to have to cut that off.
Great. Mrs. Hennessy.
Just spinning off of that to the superintendent, if I might, because there are a number of families out there that are wondering, you know, where is my child going to be? Haven't heard anything about remote, you know, whatever. It's a lot of these changes that are occurring. If additional people sign up for wanting remote, then it does shift everything, correct?
Absolutely.
Because you were just speaking to that, and I think that that's part of the puzzle that maybe families need to hear and understand that each time you get a new phone call or another email about someone shifting somewhere, it really means that everything kind of needs to shift to a certain extent.
Absolutely, yep. And, and it's having an effect on class sizes for both. So we have to carefully consider, how do we manage that in the schools? We can't have too low of a class size and have a very, very high class size in remote. So what we're trying to do is balance that, and when, when we can, we're going to have to collapse classrooms for in-person learning to support remote learning. So at a certain point, we need to have a finality of the numbers, that way we can assign all of our staff and be ready for day one.
So hypothetically, if you were to say that tomorrow was like the cutoff, what would you anticipate then it's going to take you all to then do that kind of final build out so that people then might be able to learn about classroom assignments, like another week? I, I'm just trying to understand because I feel like there are a lot of parents that are having some concern and anxiety because obviously, our timeframe is getting tight and we know that you all are busy working. But is it something that we can try and push them out a little bit, that they know that you're trying to get the information so that, you know, it helps those anxieties a bit?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think it does take a couple of days for us to finalize class rosters. And I think the other thing is that we've already had some staff members reaching out to students, so we don't want to disrupt that process as it's going on. But as we've seen, there has been more movement towards remote, only recently, because it's gone both ways. We've had students who were, wanted to go remote come back, and then we've had people who are in person to go remote. And that has a major effect on our planning to be able to assign the classes to teachers and give everyone their, you know, loads for the year.
Yep. Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I just think there's a lot of anxiety around things, so I appreciate the insight.
Any other questions? Mr. Caruso.
Yeah, Doug, if you could let me know a little bit about the, the list of the facilities, things that you've shown us, the reports. They've all listed the recommendations. I've noticed you said that we're going to be updating in terms of what's been accomplished. Do you have any like checklist things that you've provided to staff or anybody that said, this is done, this is done, this room's been cleaned, the fans, whatever, whatever the recommendation was? Have we provided those yet to anybody?
So if you look at the high school report, the high school report has had two updates since the original report. And that report acts much in the manner that you're describing. It says, you know, this was recommended and this is the work that has been completed. So we're anticipating that all reports will look similar to that in future updates. So it will say exactly what has been completed.
And every indication is that everything that's been recommended will be able to be accomplished by the time school opens on the 21st?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. In terms of after that, after school's open and this has been done, I'm assuming that there's been some type of a system put in place for continually re-inspecting and keeping tabs on these things?
Yes, that's actually a priority for the facilities department. I actually spoke with Ted Scott today, and we're looking to schedule the consultant to come in, in early November and then again in December, so that we have those dates already scheduled out in the future, so that we can ensure that the changes that we implemented are still working well with the temperature changes. I know that's a concern that's out there, so we're, we're scheduling those dates.
And, and we can reassure everyone that's going to be in every one of the rooms that it's been checked, it's been, it will have been fixed. Everything is going to be where it belongs when we open the doors.
We're adopting the recommendations of the consultant, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you. Next is Mrs. Murphy.
Good evening. New staff orientation. On August 27th, we welcomed approximately 25 educators to the Marlboro Public Schools. I would like to thank the mayor and members of the school committee that were able to join us in the Whitcomb Auditorium. Throughout the year, new educators will be supported through the Marlboro Public Schools Induction Program. This program includes a mentor for all educators in their first year of teaching and a series of mandatory seminars for all new Marlboro teachers. Remote learning planning. Students in grades six through 12 will receive information regarding their remote schedules at the same time as students in the hybrid model. This morning, there was another adjustment to the Whitcomb remote team, so as numbers change, that's going to happen in both buildings. The K through five remote team has been meeting together and with their grade level hybrid colleagues as all teachers prepare to welcome students to their classes. Elementary families attending remote classes should expect an email or a call from their remote teachers by the end of this week. All right, we're, we're shuffling classes again tomorrow, but they should have Thursday and Friday to do this. Student technology will be distributed at each of the elementary schools. All available remote teachers will spend one day at each of the elementary schools to distribute technology and meet parents and students. By meeting, we mean a masked smile and a wave, but at least it's a face-to-face. And the reopening committee, just wanted to add that the, two things. The instruction, instruction reopening committee has continued to meet throughout the summer. In June, the committee worked with the instructional technology specialists to create a list of common tools that all Marlboro educators and students will use during the 2020-21 school year across all models. Professional development has focused on these tools. Attached to my report is, is the September professional development offerings. Also, just wanted to echo with the earlier discussion that this past week, the reopening committee met with Mr. Dan Riley, principal of Marlboro High School. In June, it was the committee that identified a list of priority groups we hoped that would be able to attend school in person full-time regardless of the identified district-wide model. Marlboro High School has been trying to do what we asked, and we always, from the very beginning, wanted everyone to look at it from the student lens. And when we met with Mr. Riley and we looked at it from the student lens, we just, as the reopening committee wants to, everyone to know, we fully support Mr. Riley and his team and the work and identifying what was best for his students. Any questions?
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? Mrs. Matthews.
Mrs. Murphy, can we participate in any of this PD?
Did you like?
I could use a Zoom class or a Google class.
Actually, they've been filming and we may have a whole webpage that has all the films.
Okay, good, because I could use a lesson here and there.
We can share those out.
Thank you.
And I think all of the, the apps
Yep.
Came onto our tablets also.
Yeah.
I have like 12 pages of little kid apps on my, so I could use a few of these classes to figure out what to do with them.
Any other questions from the committee? Any other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ten, a motion to approve the minutes of August 25th.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. Do a roll call vote? Oh, I don't have to do a roll call.
No, we're all here.
We're all here. All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Thank you very much. Public participation, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Diaz, can we put the slide back up for public participation? Again, if you would like to participate in the public participation portion of this meeting, call the phone number 774-243-0611. The conference ID is 422-250-057. Again, that phone number is 774-243-0611. And the conference ID is 422-250-057. Just as a reminder, public participation is not a question-and-answer session with the committee, but a chance for you to offer your public comment. And generally, if we just take a, a short, brief moment to allow the TV to catch up to us, because in the past, we've had a couple of folks who called in a little bit later than public participation, we just want to make sure they have an opportunity. Mr. Diaz, do we have anybody waiting in the lobby?
There's no one in the lobby as of right now, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Is there any public participation? Is there anyone that would like to be heard? Is there any public participation? Public participation? Seeing none. Action items. MHS schedule adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've, Mr. Riley has been patiently waiting in the meeting, and thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Riley. He is looking to have the committee support him in using a full day for students taking the PSAT and SAT on October 14th. This, this format will provide a supportive test environment, free from distractions of the bell schedule. And we are looking at the school, we are asking for the school committee to accept the PSAT/SAT testing on October 14th. Just a note, I guess a personal note, this, this has been incredibly difficult for students over the past year. Multiple SAT sittings, multiple ACT sittings have been canceled. Private places that I'm sure everyone's familiar with who generally offer this testing have really struggled with the mandates for physical distancing. And I appreciate Mr. Riley bringing this... And I appreciate Mr. Riley bringing this forwards. That way, we can try to give everyone the same chance to take the PSAT and also the SAT. Mr. Riley, I'm not sure if you had any comments you'd like to give the committee just to support this recommendation.
Thank you, Superintendent Bergeron. A couple of small adjustments, just in case anyone's wondering about the impact on grade levels. As Superintendent Bergeron mentioned, this past spring presented a great disruption to the opportunities that our juniors and seniors typically have with taking the SATs. So what we're looking at is actually focusing the October 14th date on the needs of juniors who would be able to take the PSAT at no charge, and that'd be offered through the school. In addition to that, sophomores who voluntarily want to come in and take the PSATs would be able to do that, but we're going to offer that opportunity sometime in January. So I'll be coming back to the committee once the College Board buttons down a date for in-school testing for January. Then we'll be coming back and talking about meeting the needs of our sophomores, but we want to try to spread the students. So October 14th will be focused on juniors and seniors. It'd be a PSAT test for National Merit Scholarship for juniors, and it would be free of charge. And then for our seniors, they would pay for their SAT testing as well onsite. And there are, of course, fee waivers that can go along with that for any student that is part of our free or reduced lunch program. So that's what we are, that's what we are presenting going into this year to try to make up for some of the lost time in the spring that the students encountered with the COVID restrictions.
Questions from the committee? Ms. Ryan.
Mr. Riley, how will this work with the two different cohorts?
So our hope on October 14th, what we're asking the committee for is to let us do a day of testing on October 14th so that students from either cohort could come in on that day and test. So we would need to forego the typical A/B placement within the schedule for that day and just allow students from across both 11th and 12th grade to come in and test. And we feel like we're going to need the capacity of the school to meet the needs of both of those groups over a period of about three and a half hours. So that's why we're asking for school to be an all-day testing opportunity for those two grades on that day.
Mrs. Matthews, oh, sorry.
Who's next? Ms. Matthews.
And I guess I'll throw that one other question out there. What about the ones that are remote? If they so choose to want to be tested, how will we accommodate them?
So we are, you know, that's actually more of a College Board question that we are asking. So Mrs. D Horace, as kind of the lead from the Guidance Department on the setup of this opportunity, is working with them to see what opportunities can be in place for students who choose not to come into school that day. As of right now, we do not have one. So there is no remote option that we're aware of for PSAT or SAT testing. So we'll be able to provide the students and the families with a safe socially-distanced environment to come in and take the exams, but the chances of us being able to offer it remote, those opportunities have not been presented to us just yet.
So if a parent does feel comfortable with allowing them to come in for the test, we would allow them, yes?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think parents have to make that determination regardless of what environment they choose their student to take a test in, because as of right now, it's either an in-school test like the one we're proposing on October 14th, or it's a Saturday test in which the student would still have to travel to another location that would be socially-distanced and sit to take the exam. So unfortunately, as of right now, they don't have that remote option in place just yet. But I would be optimistic that maybe they're going to have to start to look at that in the future. I know that many colleges have started to give leeway with SAT results as being part of the acceptance criteria, and part of that is tied to the fact that they are not able to offer a remote option to families as of yet.
Ms. Tennessee.
Thank you. Two questions. Number one, would these students register through you all as opposed to the College Board for this specific date?
Yes, actually, we have kind of jumped the gun on preparing for this, so my apologies to the committee. We had a deadline that we had to meet in order to start to get students registering, so I guess I was coming into this really hoping that you'd be excited about it. So we've had seniors that have been coming in, that have been submitting registrations to us in order to sit for the exam, and juniors to sit for the PSAT National Merit-Based Exam. All they have to do is simply email the school, and we're taking those emails as a registration request and then adding them to the list for testing.
Great. And one other last question. Can your site be canceled? Like the College Board has canceled many other locations that were being held on Saturdays. Is our location still up in the air as to whether that will definitely happen, or could they still pull it?
I think the only condition under which they would pull it is, as a community, is if we started to restrict schools being open, which we are not there. So yes, as of right now, we're open, we're able to do it, we're pursuing that opportunity. We haven't received any information from College Board or the state that we can't host testing.
Okay, and thank you. I really was asking that more for clarity because I think a lot of families have been struggling, as you had mentioned, about trying to get the SAT executed. And I really think this is great that you all really set aside a date specifically to make this happen for our students here in Marlboro, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Ms. Bowden-Hedges.
So just so I'm clear, any students not taking a test that day will not go to school on October 14th. Only students taking a test, and they're going to be spread out over the whole building in lots of different places, so there'll be lots of, are the teachers going to be proctoring? I mean, how are you going to? Yep?
Yes, and yes. Yes to both questions, absolutely. So we feel like in order to host the number of students that are ultimately going to be interested in sitting for the exams, we're going to need as many rooms as we can get, and we'll also have the staff support us with proctoring as they do during typical, whether it's MCAS or PSAT testing, that is typically proctored by the staff when it occurs onsite during these types of testing days.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Other questions from the committee? I have one question. Why are you watching us from Ms. Bowden-Hedges' house?
That's so funny.
Just carry.
Teams is a wonderful thing, isn't it? Teams backgrounds are great.
Entertainer motions.
You have good choice, Mr. Riley.
Motion to approve the movement date.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, for coming tonight.
Preschool tuition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Marlboro Public Schools has historically charged tuition for students to attend the Early Childhood Center, or our preschool. Given FY21 program changes as well as potential financial hardship for families due to COVID-19, administration is asking that tuition be eliminated in FY21 and reevaluated for FY22. This is something I alluded to two weeks ago on my Finance and Operations Report. The preschool tuition account offsets $200,000 in salaries annually, and we've been able to secure that amount in the revolving account to support FY21 budget offset. Therefore, my recommendation is that the school committee approve the elimination of preschool tuition for FY21.
Entertainer motion.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Supervisor of remote learning job description.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Due to the state of emergency for COVID-19, parents and guardians were given the option of choosing to have their children take part in either hybrid model or remote learning model for education during the FY21 school year. The status, obviously, the COVID-19 state of emergency has prompted the need to create a temporary position Supervisor of Remote Learning K through 12. My recommendation is that the school committee vote to approve the job description for the temporary position of Supervisor of Remote Learning K through 12. What I did fail to put on here, though, is that I did discuss this job description with the negotiations committee before bringing it, subcommittee, sorry, before bringing this to the full committee.
It's a pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Policies for first read.
So I would like to ask for a suspension of the rules if we could please move forward on these policies. As I gave you a heads-up at our last meeting, we are just trying to update anything that potentially needed to have minor alterations relative towards the pandemic, so I would like to make that motion to move forward with these policies tonight.
Motion to suspend the rules and vote on these policies tonight. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Policy 4.500 Transportation.
Thank you very much. So hopefully, you did receive my email earlier this evening just for one area of clarity of an amendment that I frankly had not written down correctly. And just to bring it to your attention, that was on 8G elementary students in grades K through five riding late buses shall not be released to anyone other than a parent or guardian without written consent. Okay, so that was just my error on how I had
They shall not be released at all. We're going to just hold on to them forever.
They're just not released. So that was my error on doing too much typing too quickly. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the appropriate amendments on policy 4.500 Transportation.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Policy 4.500 Transportation as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Policy 4.520 Responsibilities of Bus Drivers.
Thank you very much. So again, this was one that I just had some minor issues relatively what I was supposed to do, and I did not do it throughout the whole policy. We wanted to make it gender-neutral, so I did go through and make that revision so that we could hopefully vote on a gender-neutral policy. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with policy 4.520 Responsibilities of Bus Drivers.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Policy 4.520 Responsibility of Bus Drivers as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries?
Thank you very much.
Policy 7.000 Remote Learning.
Thank you. Before we actually leave the transportation, I did want to thank Assistant Superintendent, or no, Business Manager. I'm going to mess it up, whatever. I'm going to thank Doug Diaz.
Mr. Diaz.
Mr. Diaz for all of his help on those two policies. I do appreciate it. So on policy 7.00 Remote Learning, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with that document.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Policy 7.000 Remote Learning. Any discussion? Ms. Matthews.
Just a quick question on the last bullet. There's a question mark before continuously. Was that, you have continuously in red, which I assume isn't
Yeah, that would be my error.
Okay, so the question mark is just an error to, shouldn't be there?
Yes.
Okay. Because I didn't know if, like, you were saying, should we question the sentence that's being there, or?
And it's removed now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Mr. Crusoe.
In both places? Remote learning policy, just take the word out because it is what it is?
So done. So I will make those amendments right here.
Any further discussion?
Yep.
Seeing none. All those in favor? As amended. All those opposed? Carries. Policy 8.070 Student Initial Grade Placement.
Okay, policy 8 point, there it is. Sorry, I have to open up my drafts. I apologize. So I'd like to make a motion to approve policy 8.070 Initial Grade Placement Policy.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Ms. Matthews.
So in your heading, student needs to come out?
Yes.
Okay. And policy?
Yes.
Okay. Initial grade placement.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Policy 8.070 as amended. All in favor? Opposed? Carries? Policy 8.150 Communicable Diseases.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I pulled up the wrong one. I'd like to make a motion to approve 8.150 Communicable Diseases.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Ms. Matthews.
If I recall, did you say we did not have this policy in place, or we did?
So what happened here is that we did have a policy in place, which is currently our 8.150. We are looking to actually strike what we currently have on the books and replace it with the policy that I had supplied to you that was from MAS-C. In our review, as well as when we had submitted to our attorneys, Michael Joyce's office, that was their suggestion that we move forward with the MAS-C policy. So that would be our hope.
All right, so thank you for that clarification.
So we're striking the first one and accepting the second one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, the form, do we need that in there?
No, we do not. And actually, that was one of the reasons of actually doing the removal. When I make this official, I will take off MAS-C, which is currently on there in policy. I tried to keep it MAS-C so that we would know the differences as we were discussing it.
Makes a lot more sense now that you're explaining that from reading it.
Okay, all right, now
So the whole first four or five pages is going away?
Yes.
And it's the MAS-C one that we're keeping?
The one that's MAS-C, up in the header?
The one page.
The one page. And when we went through and discussed everything with the attorneys, it really, what we had did not make as much sense. We also did not need the form, and so that's why we did the change.
Got it.
Excellent. And you'll strike the MAS-C and policy?
I didn't want to do more to change things until we were in agreement.
Got it.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Policy 8.150 as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Policy 8.16 Pandemic Disease.
So thank you very much. So with the pandemic flu policy that we had on our books, 8.160, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the amendments as noted.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Policy 8.160 Pandemic Diseases as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Policy 8.170 Immunization of Students.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the Immunization Policy 8.170.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
I just had a question. Did we have this before? This is a new, we did? So there weren't any changes?
No, there weren't any changes to this.
Any further discussion?
Yes, well, okay, we added the legal reference.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Policy 8.210 Participation in Extracurricular Activities.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the
Policy 8.210 Participation in Extracurricular Activities.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the Policy 8.210 with the amendments. Yes, as we've discussed earlier, our policy will be removed off of the header and the title. So.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Ms. Bowden-Henninger.
Usually, school committees capitalized.
Yes. Okay.
And Superintendent. So just keeping consistent.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Acceptance of Donations and Gifts. Ohio Pile, Marlboro High School, $17.35.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Mass Desi R-T-L-E Grant. How's that? Students at Home Technology Needs, $232,710.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Reports of Subcommittee's. Any reports of Subcommittee's? Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. I know you'll find it a surprise, but we have another policy meeting later this week. So we are trying to finish up on just a few last items that we wanted to make sure were updated as close to the beginning of school as possible. So I appreciate your indulgence on trying to move forward these policies quickly. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Ms. Matthews.
Yes, I just would like to thank the MEA. We have come to an agreement on modifications to the contract for the school year, and it's been a long six months of conversation, and we have now come to an agreement, and I think everything will move forward in a great way. And we're working with some other units as well, and things are progressing and looking forward to day one with students.
Really appreciate the work of all of our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none. Members' forum. Ms. Matthews.
I've reviewed the warrant, and I will be signing it.
Thank you. Ms. Bowden-Henninger.
Thank you. First part is just a question to the Superintendent regarding school handbooks. So we didn't get new handbooks. I just am assuming it's just going to continue with last year's handbooks. In fact, I know that because my next point is that I had a conversation today with Mary Ellen Klein from the high school regarding the student SAC kids and the student rep position. And they are going to have elections. They're doing it on a virtual platform, and they're going to do student council elections and include, and we're going with the wording that's in last year's handbook. So that's why I knew that, but it made me think about handbooks. So they will be electing the SAC kids. From the SAC kids, they then will elect a rep, so we will have a student rep for this year as we normally do, which is good. And I wanted to thank Mrs. Hennessy and the policy gurus. You guys have been working tirelessly, as have we on the negotiation side, but I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work that you've put into getting these together and out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Other members? Ms. Hennessy.
I actually just wanted to say thank you for having the welcoming for the new teachers and inviting us to be there, which you do, but I know that obviously, you know, this year is a little abnormal, that we have to be cautious about numbers and everything. But it was, it was really, I have to say, I know it sounds kind of nutty, a lot of fun to sit there, have the new teachers that were out in the middle of the Wicca auditorium, and then surrounded by all of administration from all of the buildings everywhere and doing the introductions, even ending with Mr. Sanborn's jazz hands. So it just, it was, it was really fun, and I really hope that it was as fun for the new staff that was there to experience it, because as you really went around the room, it really spoke to the teamwork that we have here. Everybody's dealing with a big puzzle, but working together, we're going to make this work, and it's going to be the best darn plan it can be, and you guys are going to change and adapt. And it was just really impressive. So I really wanted to say thank you for including us there, because it was great to see, and it made me feel really good, because it kind of brought home all of the work that you guys have so tirelessly been doing. And boy, I cannot wait for the first day of school for our students, whether they are at home or in school. It's going to be a great accomplishment. So thank you to all of the effort from everywhere, all the corners.
Any other members? Any other members?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Thank you very much.[1797.51][1797.51]